The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start our official meeting, I'd just like to take a moment and ask for a moment of silence. Our Police Chief Mark Lasse's dad. And I would just like to take a moment to reflect on that, please. If we can start our meeting. We have some minutes to approve this morning. Minutes of our Board of Selectmen's meeting held on March twentieth. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
John is my.
Then we have our minutes of our Board of Selectmen work session held on March twenty-fifth. Could I have a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Any second, please?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we have minutes of our Board of Selectmen's work session held on March twenty-seventh. Could I have a motion to accept those?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Then we have our minutes of our deliberative session, which was held on February third. Could I have a motion to accept those?
I'll make that.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
They don't want me to sign this.
No?
Are you down bottom in the lower left, right there?
No.
I don't make those qualifications.
Sorry, John. It might be me. You forgot one. So we probably shouldn't sign these, or just?
I'm used to it.
Okay. First order of business is, we have Fern Floral here. They obviously want to talk about the first annual New Hampshire Flower Festival.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Before we start, I do have a PowerPoint that she has sent me, so I'm sharing that to anyone who's watching live, or via Zoom, and also with the screen they can. And then she also did give you guys a handover, so all of the girls take it away.
Okay.
Awesome. I'm a little bit nervous.
That's all right.
I was just as equally nervous when I presented to Alicia and Danielle, so excuse me. Amanda and I, I'm the owner of Fern Floral, I, my name's Ally. This is Amanda, she owns Rooted and Grounded, and we came up with the idea that we would love to host an annual event that celebrates all things flowers. It is a community and family-friendly event that we are proposing that we host right here at the pavilion, as well as throughout the pavilion parking lot. We would hopefully use that entire space. What we're hoping to do is start up an annual end-of-summer event. And we'd like to offer it free this year to anyone who would like to come and enjoy the event. And then we would also be renting out spaces for vendors as well. So we have a couple of people who would be featured vendors, and then people who would pay for vendor spots. And then it would be free to the public. Some of the things that we want to incorporate in this event are live, is some live music. We have bands that have already reached out to me, who are willing to take the next step in signing up for this event, one of them being completely free. We also have lots of local vendors, and specifically two local flower farms, Roth Farm. Kelly is librarian here in town. And we want to help support and bring, you know, a little bit of information to the community about the local flower farms and what they do for us local flower, uh, florists. We also want to bring in some local greenhouses and nurseries. I've reached out and spoken with Pearson's Greenhouse out of Farmington. They've been around for a very long time, and they would love to be involved in this event with us to just kind of spread the joy of all things flowers, and the beauty of flowers, and what they really bring to everybody's lives. You know, I think all of us have been touched by flowers, whether that be a wedding, or a memorial service, or a birthday, or baby shower, so we really just want to celebrate all things floral. Some of the things that we're hoping to host in this event are some fun things for kids. I have a baker in mind that I've spoken with, her name's Jada. She owns the Chasing Birds Bakery out of Laconia. And she would like to join us and host a stand where she would do cookie decorating. Flower-shaped cookies that she's made up, and kids will be able to decorate for a very low cost, so we can incorporate family activities like that. As well as potentially some contests regarding people's floral art, whether that be paintings that people have done of flowers, or sculptures that are floral, or pretty much anything floral art. We'd love to host a community contest, or some sort of event where people can come in and, you know, raise their vote and vote for the best, you know, piece. So, um, so those are some events that we've talked about. Other than the live music, we definitely want food and drink down here, if we could. We have lots of local food trucks and food vendors who also have reached out, who would love to be a part of this event. And really, we just want to bring everybody down to the community. You know, I love this space, we love this space. Old Home Day, it was my first time last year being down here. I had such a great time during the event. And my husband and I were down here walking out with kids the other day, or not the other day, but a couple months ago, when we first came up with this idea. And we thought, what a wonderful place to have a great event like that. You know, we don't see a lot of events down here for the community. So we wanted to hopefully host another one. And with the help of Alicia and Danielle, we'd love to make it a Belmont community event, and help, you know, bring some money into the community, bring some, you know, folks to the community, supporting local businesses and things like that. And lastly, some of the people that we have reached out to, who are also on our list of people who are interested in coming and being a part of this event, are Petals in the Pines in Canterbury, they do fantastic work for education for all ages, seniors, right down to toddlers, as well as the Fox County, or country, the Smokehouse. Yep, they do a lot of fantastic work over there as well. And Main Street Honey, we could not have our flowers without the bees. So we'd love to also incorporate those local businesses in this event. Did you have anything else that you'd like to add?
I think you've covered most of it. I think the biggest thing is just, when you envision an event like this, it's not a farmer's market, but kind of a similar type of atmosphere, where you're getting people to come out. They're supporting an event, something that isn't done in the state. A New Hampshire Flower Festival will be the first of its kind. I think you're going to drive in people who aren't just from the town. It's focused for the town, but you'll bring other people into the community and see what Belmont really has to offer, and how beautiful a pavilion really is. I'm just out of uptown in Laconia, and I've never known about the pavilion until Ally told me, and it's absolutely stunning. So I need to really showcase it and bring such a beautiful vibe here is a great opportunity for the town.
Um, I, I think it's great. Okay, my first thought comes, is obviously police and fire. I think of those right off the bat, obviously, for not knowing how many people are going to attend. Or, I don't know if, if, yeah, I think definitely, but that's, Danielle will help, obviously, pull that together and coordinate that as far as, you know.
For if I may, I did speak, I sat down with Rod and Arlen Ustek and our town plan Karen about this, because we have had events in town that weren't on town properties, so where this is a town property event, where, so we've looked at a, basically looking at vendor fees. And we've looked at, you know, having to sit down with police and fire and say, okay, how many, how many people would be?
Do you have, yeah, before you have to?
What kind of detail, and that would obviously, the detail would be included in the vendor fee that we would, you know, pass on to them. And so Karen and Rod are looking into it, they're going to try to, you know, mirror, kind of like Laconia does a lot of events. So, you know, we're, we don't have fees yet for events like this, because we've never really hosted something on our own property, so we've gone somewhere else. So there is a fee schedule that really does need to be created and adopted to cover something like this. But we're all super excited, if you guys are willing to, to bless it, and Dagan and I will work together with Karen and the appropriate partners.
I don't have a problem with it, does it?
It's a question. How do you guys plan on, like, advertising something like this?
So Amanda and I have talked about this a lot. We have been advertising our businesses online for, you know, she just started, but I've been advertising online for a couple of years now. And our plans are to just attack it from every social media opportunity. We've talked about the Laconia Sun. I also have connections with the Concord Hippo, and a lot of community action at Concord. So I'd be able to get some of our word out into the, you know, capital area more so, as well as we plan on doing flyers, and posting on lots of community pages, and just really making it an event that we are just kind of putting in everybody's ear on a regular basis. And as soon as we get the approval, the plan is to go ahead. We're pretty confident and prepared for getting the advertising out there once the, you know, proposal is approved.
Sure.
So, um, our, our goal is to just really start tackling it on social media, and then reaching out to local, you know, advertising and newsletters and things like that.
It's like anything else, this is the first time, and word of mouth, once it takes place, is phenomenal.
And that's part of the reason why we were considering doing it free to the public, so no entrance fee, because we want people to see what it's about. So if they can come this first year and experience it for free, and we say, okay, well, this first year is going to be free, and if everybody really enjoys it, then we can charge, you know, whatever we see fit for next year. And that's why we wanted to keep the admissions free to the public, really draw everyone in. I also meant to mention that these flowers are made because we're going to be doing a huge photo shop, photo shoot area with Lauren Sandborn, and allowing families to come and take pictures of the event. And she's also going to be walking around and taking pictures of the community in the event. So we'll have a lot of things for advertising for next year as well, with a professional photographer down there.
Yes.
I just have a question, as far as what would the town be required for setup and cleanup?
So I, we haven't really discussed that. Amanda and I have been pretty confident that we were going to be doing quite a bit of setup for the main event, but we were going to host it very similar to Old Home Day, with everybody sets up and cleans up in regards to their own spots. I was going to obviously reach out and see what we needed to do. I talked about porta-potties, trash removal, and things like that, but we were kind of waiting to see where this meeting went.
So you have, you have a tentative plan?
Yeah, we're, I mean, we, we know that we definitely need to address those things once the approval comes, and they're definitely on our mind.
Donna, did you have a question?
I just wanted to make sure that it was, it's awesome, it's, it's really exciting, it's great. All the buzzwords you want to throw out there. I just know that we eliminated Old Home Day this year. And this is great, but building a ground, PD, fire department, highway department really has a huge part in Old Home Day. And it sounds like if this blows apart at that level, that as long as the board, when they move forward, they say it's cost-neutral, meaning it's not going to cost the town anything. Because again, we're giving up a whole home day, and we can't financially support any local flowers. So as long as, as long as it can be a cost-neutral, it's, it's awesome, but.
I totally understand, and hear what you're saying. And we originally were planning to take care of it completely as a private event. So when we approached Alicia, and she said, well, let's make it a community event, we were, when we had first, you know, brought it to her, we were under the impression that we were going to be taking care of all those costs ourselves anyways. And we were going to be incorporating those into what we were going to charge our vendors. So the hope is that it will bring money to the community and not cost anything. Where we're not going to be shutting down any main roads, we are hoping to keep it just to the pavilion area. Then if it does blow up, maybe next year it will be, you know, a great opportunity to make some more money for the community, and hopefully it does blow up and it's great for the community. But yes, our hope is to absolutely, no cost, it will hopefully be completely covered by vendors and things like that.
Then where the fee schedule for the application, basically for them to host this event will come into play, where we decide after talking to the front heads, what kind of coverage will be needed. You know, they'll pay that fee, and then they'll get that fee from their vendors.
I'm just, thanks. I just wanted to make sure. Seventeen voters eliminated last year's budget. So with that said, we've crunched and crunched and worked really, really hard to sustain pretty much as much normalcy as we could, so it would be no offense to you.
No, and I totally, absolutely no offense taken, I absolutely loved Old Home Day. So I totally understand that. And this is supposed to be an entity that will hopefully grow, you know, some awareness to this beautiful area that we have, our communities. Some of, we have some really great companies and small businesses here, so we want to just bring people out. Yeah, I, I think that our plan will mainly be to have all of the vendors covered. I know that Amanda, Amanda and I met at a wedding expo. And Amanda and I paid three hundred and fifty dollars for a very short day of mingling. And I know that vendors, like us, for an event like this, where people would be buying their, whatever they want to sell, would be willing to, if they knew it was going to be an annual thing, pay, you know, more than the forty or fifty dollars depending. So I'm confident that we will be able to find vendors that will be able to accommodate the cost that we need to cover all of our expenses for the event.
Awesome. All right. Does anyone have any other questions? I see Kettlehead Brewing is another vendor that's hoping to join. So would that mean there would be alcohol or samples involved in that? And do we have?
That would be further discussion with you, because right now the town is not allowed alcohol on town properties. So if that was a vendor that was looking to come here, obviously they would have a liquor license to sell at an event like this. You guys would need to give them special approval, if that is something you would want to allow them today, but that is discussion for later, and approval at a later date in time, if they wanted to.
Okay. All right. Any other?
Good.
And I'm fine with it. I think you have our blessing. I mean, move forward, and obviously Alicia and Danielle will work and bring in the police and fire, however that works.
No, that's a blessing we can start with.
You don't need to.
Karen and Rod will already kind of on it, as far as the fee schedule and the application, and kind of gauging, you know, what kind of presence is needed on the level of participation.
Do we need an official?
Do you need a formal motion or anything?
Motion?
I was going to ask Alenia.
Uh, not really.
I don't think so, it's kind of, go for it. Yeah. All right, all right, thank you for coming in, great idea.
Awesome, thank you so much, we're very excited, so.
We have a flower.
That's really cool.
They will be really cool, we're doing big blades of grass, and they'll be, some of them will be like six feet tall, some of them will be short, so yeah, they'll be a really cool setup, and we're very excited. Thank you so much for having us.
And for your questions, and help us think of different things that we'll have to address on the road.
Absolutely.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well, thank you.
Our next item is PD new hire request, Steve.
Yes, so as you know, we do have an opening. And we do have somebody that we're looking at for a full-time position. Is, is done as a background process at this point, and looking for you to go ahead and hire for a full-time position.
I don't have a problem with that. Anyone have any questions?
I'd make a motion, but I don't care.
Oh, oh, I can't, I don't know the name either.
I'm not even going to try that one.
No?
Cynthia Simone.
John's making that motion. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, now we have a PD part-time new hire request.
Yes, so we were approached a couple weeks back about possibly taking on a part-time officer. The role in this, for this particular officer is to conduct investigations, as like a detective, working through the county attorney's office. So there's no expense to the town of Belmont at all. Everything's been taken care of through the county attorney's office. So basically, we're holding a certification for this person to be able to continue doing what they're doing at this point.
Got it.
I have a question.
Yeah?
So I, I do know a little bit about this, because I'm from the county.
Yep.
With us taking the person on, does that not only give, we can't grant full jurisdiction though, correct? For the county? So she would only work for Belmont's investigations?
We have mutual aid agreements with all the other towns within Belmont County.
Okay.
So essentially, it would go through us, but it's, you know, we have mutual aid with all the other communities, so.
Okay, so she doesn't have to be sworn in at every town that she can go through us?
No, so it'd be no different if they, if, say, for instance, the police department called us to say, hey, can one of your detectives help us with, with this case? And we've, we've done that in the past. We work a lot with young ones, they don't have a lot of the resources that we have. So our detectives will over give them a hand with whatever they need. So similar situation.
And there's no cost to us for this?
No cost, no cost.
How I understood it with talking to Steve, it's just kind of giving her a home base as far as the swearing in and the certification, right? She has to be tied to a town.
Yep, yep. And it, I guess it's, you could, you could equate it to the head position that we currently have. It's funded through Butter Brand, or the school resource officer, it's funded through the school.
Yes.
We're not, she's not, she's not on our payroll getting paid.
He's just using this as a, and, so she is a certified police officer?
She is.
So, and she has to have a home base to keep her certification?
Do we know why she lost her certification with the sheriff?
She hasn't lost her certification right now, from what I understand, there's an MOU that is due to expire next week.
Yeah.
So. I think that would be something that the county attorney's office and the sheriff's department would have to answer to.
And she wouldn't be in the building, she would stay at the, where is her?
The county.
At the complex, yeah.
Yep.
All right, okay. Can I have a motion from someone, or? I'll make the motion. Motion to approve the hiring of Christina, Christine, Kristen, Bernier, Bernier? As a part-time police officer. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Heritage Commission member appointment. Just a standard thing, okay, all right. Um, this is ju, this is a reappointment, right? She's already, okay, all right. This is just to reappoint Priscilla Anis to the Heritage Commission. Does someone want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Um, second. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And that's as a full member with her term starting March twenty, twenty-seven.
Seven, okay. Then we have a motion to appoint Norma Patton as an alternate cemetery trustee. Her term is expiring March of twenty twenty-six.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we have a motion to approve the appointment of Kevin Sturgeon as an alternate cemetery trustee, with term expiring March twenty twenty-seven.
I'll make the motion.
I oppose.
Okay, second? Do I have a second? Don't put that in the minute. That's Sunny being smarty. Second? You do, yeah. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Who was the second?
I made the motion. Can't second as well.
Oh, I didn't know, okay, I'll second.
I'll second it.
Yeah, then we're all going to do it. And we all approved, correct?
Yes.
Gail's School Grant Funding Extension.
New York, I have a request. CVC's at Gail's School, had applied for a five hundred dollars in federal grants. In this email, they state that the project was delayed as a result of COVID's impact on pricing, creating a huge budget gap. And they are still trying to fill the gap through fundraising, as well as attract investors and historic tax credits. So they are extending their grant for more months for a contract expired May, May third, twenty twenty-five. And I do have a figure four with design and after that, I hate to get turned off, but. So there really is no motion, just letting you guys know that they are extending. I know there's a lot of questions sometimes out in the community that we could ask about that. And a lot of people think that it's the town, it's not the town at all.
No.
We don't have anything to do with that property, so hopefully they can get their funding.
We don't know how much their minus? How much is it short? Yeah, I think it's right around a hundred thousand for tax credits, because they're hoping to put the bids out within the next couple of weeks. Per ambulance, per? Per ambulation, okay. Canterbury and Gilmington.
I was contacted back in twenty-two, when I had first transitioned to the TA from Gilmington, about doing our per ambulation. I kind of put it off, because it's kind of a low priority, although the towns are required to do the per ambulation. I think it's about every seven years. And then last week, I was contacted by Canterbury, because they're doing theirs, so it's a fine, I can't put it off anymore. I did speak with Rod, and he's here to help. Um, I did speak with Rod and he's here to help fill any gaps. So essentially, it, the per ambulation falls under the forest selectmen. Basically, what you're gonna do is walk through the woods with the land surveyor and not both the boundaries between us and the other town. If you do not want to volunteer one of yourselves, you may appoint someone as your doesn't, doesn't need to do that. Rod has a little bit of experience with it and he said he's willing to trudge through the woods to do so. But you guys are obviously welcome to do so. So we need to be updated. Um, the gentleman who was doing Canterbury, which was, who was it, Mark Stevens? Um, so the last time we did ours was in nineteen seventy-eight, so we're a little behind on updating that with the state. And while we're doing the other two communities, we might as well reach out to the others too to see, you know, when the last time they did theirs or our did ours. We have to do some digging downstairs in the basement to see if we have any record.
So why do we have to do this, I mean?
It's a requirement of the state every seven years.
Of course, of course.
And, and.
You're welcome.
And how much money are we being paid to do this? How much are we being reimbursed now to do this? I know that answer, but yeah.
The good news is for Canterbury, it's not gonna cost us anything. However, if we use a surveyor on the other boundary lines, there is gonna be a charge for that. So we can plan something in preparation for next year's budget and is possibly that I could do some of it. With regard to the records that we have on per ambulation, the last one that we have records on that I've seen was in two thousand and two for the Gilmington line. They started it and then they stopped, so they didn't complete it. It was completed in two thousand and six. So we have a physical map of the location of the monumentation. Although it doesn't provide us with any coordinates, which is typically what we would obtain.
From a surveyor.
Through that type of activity. So that we record it and the purpose of the coordinates is to allow people six years from, or seven years from now to be able to find the location of those monuments. I have, in terms of my background, I've been surveying since nineteen sixty-four. This is a long time. And I've done surveying essentially all over the world. I have not done a per ambulation, however, which is sort of a, is unique to the, to communities. Although it's something that's been done across the United States, you know, since the inception of the states. So, um, again, I've spoken with Mark Stevens. When the storm goes by and before the ticks and the black flies.
I'd love to walk it, but not in tick season.
Ticks and the black flies and poison ivy and the steeven and all those, before they come out, we're gonna try to get out there and do that. But we really have quite a large boundary along many of the abutting towns. We've got, you know, Laconia, Guilford, Gilmington, which we've got some information on Canterbury, which will get done in Northfield. And Tilted Sandwood, and we have to swim it. But it's primarily, you know, through the, through the lakes and that. But that's basically it. And again, the reason we have to do it is it's a state statute.
So you're gonna do a certain amount of that that you feel comfortable with, correct? And then what you're kind of saying is that we need to put some monies in next year's budget to be able to complete it or to hire?
We, to be perfectly honest, we don't need to hire a land surveyor.
Okay.
We don't need to do that.
Alright.
We can do it ourselves.
Yeah.
Um, I know what's required in order to get that work done. Again, it's primarily the coordinate location of the bounds along those lines. And it used to be that you would physically walk the line. That doesn't happen these days, usually because we have roads and other types of things that you can drive to these. Some of them are not so easily accessed. And in some cases, if you're trying to use global positioning, many of these bounds are located in areas where you don't pick up the satellites that are necessary to provide the location. So in some of these instances, you actually do something like pacing, which is not terribly accurate, or dragging a tape, which again is not very accurate. But you use some sort of method of methodology like that. Again, remember that the statute says that the selectmen are supposed to do that. And I don't believe that there's any requirement for selectmen to be land surveyors. So it's, it's more of a opportunity for the select board to be able to identify the boundaries and determine if they're in fact still there and if they're not, then we can make arrangements to have them repositioned or relocated. But that would be between two towns and not necessarily on, on the town of Belmont alone.
It was a peacekeeping mission between the two towns back in the day, so they wouldn't fight over land.
And as a point of information, you know, the one that was done in two thousand and two and then again in two thousand and six between Gilmington and Belmont, New Hampshire Granite has a line on a map and it does not coincide with the information that we have for our access GIS. So, and that's not surprising. But, so it's not so much the issue of accuracy, location of this, as much as it is to confirm the location of the boundary monumentation along those lines.
I provided you a little, that was in the?
Yes.
RSA, I think it was an article that was written probably in the same time.
I have a copy of the Gilmington, sorry, Gilmington map if you want to take a look at that.
Okay, alright. So we just need, unless someone wants to, does someone here want to walk that line? Anyone here? So I'll make a motion that we appoint Rod Cameron, Cam, Cameron as the selectman's rep for the town per ambulation re-project. I will second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Interesting stuff, I'd never heard of that before. Our next item is to adopt RSA eighty colon fifty-two dash A tax prepayment. Thank you, Rod.
Yeah. Thank you. So, um, I went to a training workshop last week and just kind of hit my head back again, so to speak. And they mentioned something about prepayments. And in my recollection, we had addressed this, I want to say around two thousand and sixteen because there was some tax break that was coming up. And I, I thought that Cynthia had done this for it. So during that workshop, they recommended if you can't find physically that it was approved by the select board, to just do it again, just to kind of.
Cover yourself.
Yeah. So that's why I'm presenting it for you today. We searched through the warrant articles because it can be a warrant article, it can be approved by the board, so on and so on. Um, I believe you have a copy of the RSA as well as the proposal? So it just.
Prepayment policy, yeah.
Prepayment policy, it just says that we can accept up to two years' worth of prepayment on property taxes.
Which has been common practice for?
Um, that's. At least two thousand and sixteen that I know, but yeah, it's, it's, and it's very common in the state. This is just a little housekeeping thing, just, you know, as for finding things to re, reaffirm.
Have we, have we had many people that have used that?
Um, actually we do, I, I wouldn't say a ton, but there's definitely people who every year, you know, and it, this also comes into play with people, you know, like they get their tax return and it's a large amount of money and they're thinking ahead and they're like, hey, I'm gonna put five thousand dollars towards my property taxes, which of course we love.
Sure.
Because that means that they're paid and it just, it makes it so they have the opportunity to do that type of thing. And I like to tell people, um, you know, because everybody budgets. And if you can put two hundred dollars aside for your property taxes per month, you know, have an idea of what they're gonna be, come in, make the payment. Because, you know, some people don't still do so all the same.
Sure, of course, of course.
So they come in, they put it towards that and just gets absorbed when the tax bills are made, so I, yeah.
Okay, any questions?
They can't collect interest, which I thought was an important part of that. They can't ever come back to us and say that they want interest because we took their money.
Right, right, this, this, right, so you don't have to, unlike like a, um, somebody puts a deposit on an apartment, you're supposed to hold it and pay interest, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. And the banks don't pay any interest anyways, you know, so just, yeah, really. Um, any questions? Um, would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion, I would continue on with a prepay tax prepayment policy.
And then I have the policy here for you guys to sign.
Okay.
Second.
Oh, sorry, second, okay. Travis second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry about that, guys, lost my. Alright, thanks.
Alright, thanks so much.
Thank you, John, thank you. Do you have any other new business?
Um, yes, I originally had it on your speech and then I took it off and then I realized why I had it on when I first did it. Um, during our work sessions, we did vote to not fund the household hazardous waste day for twenty twenty-four due to the equal budget. As that was a nine thousand dollar cost per one day, my whole day, a few hours. So we did cut that from the budget, I did let Lakes Region Planning Commission know. And I just basically wanted to re-break it up because, because we are not participating, Belmont will not be able to accept ways. Belmont will not be, or we will not be able to accept ways from any Belmont households. So they're not, no one in Belmont will be able to go to Canterbury. So if there are any other city or town that hosts the program this year. Put that on record.
Okay. Um, all business.
I believe at your last select meeting on the twentieth, I misspoke, so I just want to correct for the record. The hazard mitigation plan is not a match with financial funds, it is a match with in-kind funds. So the, the time, my time, the chief's time, any other departments' time into create, updating the plan is the in-kind match fund. So we won't be taking any money out of the budget, it'll just be our, our time and effort. So I just wanted to correct the record that on that.
Alright. Send a letter to DES.
Yes, I've provided you with a letter that I directed and that is, that has been sent to DES in regards to the the one forty-fourth main project and that report that had come out. So that's just an FYI of what I sent them.
And we had talked about that back earlier in March anyways, I can't remember exactly. So that was just kind of a letter to follow up.
Yep, and I've given them until the twelfth as a response as far as we're giving us a copy of the full report and any data about the line. Major?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a representative on our board.
Mm-hmm.
Um, can he give us some insight on where his position is with this and his assistant? And, and give us on, um, this matter? I mean, there's been a lot of controversy on relining the pay type versus replacing it.
Alicia's a rep, Alicia's a rep on the Winnebago?
I understand that.
Yeah.
We also have a host rep who's sitting on this board.
Okay.
Um, and this is the state of New Hampshire imposing, um.
Possible?
Yep, and so, you know, what part of the kind of given or asking Travis to participate in this?
What do you mean what part?
So you're a state representative.
Yeah, in the legislative, this is an executive branch issue.
And you represent Belmont and so therefore we have a big issue with the state of New Hampshire. So not only as a selectman, but as a representative, it would be awesome for your involvement here.
Okay, I see what you're saying now, I thought you were saying like, what can I, I can talk to them, but I can't force them to do anything, they're executive branch.
I would expect you could, but your involvement would be, you know, I would expect, you know, pretty important as this is.
Well, yeah, because they're talking, um, you know, they're, they're, um, if, if they were to do what they want to do right now, they're talking nine million dollars that we have to pay. And that's why we sent the letter and disagreed with that, obviously. You know, we don't, we don't.
And that nine million dollars is for all taxpayers, it's not just the water users.
No, it is not, it's strictly, uh-uh, it is strictly for the sewer users. It is not for townwide. In order for it to be townwide, we would have to have a, um, we would have to have it approved by the voters for it to be townwide. No, this is strictly only sewer users that would have to pay the nine million.
And even if we, even if they move forward with this and they say, okay, Belmont, this is your new bill. As we know, that goes on the warrant article, that would be the sewer's budget and the sewer budget, this, the voters could also vote down the sewer budget and then the town would still be responsible for finding out a way to pay for that regardless.
And really, this, this just falls back to, for a lot of us who are even here. It's whatever the agreements were made when they created this whole thing. So we're on the hook for that because we've, it was something long before we ever, you know, were involved.
Yeah, I think the only good push I can try to do is with our executive counselor and see if he can push the yes a little bit, to not make a stupid decision for us.
Yeah. And while we're on the, while we're on the subject of making stupid decisions, no, um, we've been waiting for the last nine years for our intersection here in Belmont.
Oh gosh.
And we were on the ten-year plan and just before COVID hit, we received notification that they were going to start, um, engineering. And that was just before COVID and we have seen no one yet, that would be a nice little.
We just passed another ten-year plan, so.
Yeah, uh-huh, well, we were on the last ten-year plan.
We can look through James' house and see who she was communicating with and just.
Oh, that's probably not.
I remember you bringing it up to the governor when they did, came in for the cutting of the police department.
Yep. Everything, every time I've seen anybody, I've brought it up. But supposedly, um, we were, they were supposed to start engineering just before COVID hit. So COVID's done and over with, but we still haven't seen anybody. Not that that, I think it took them five years to do the one on the corner of one oh-six and CB Road, so that would be another thing. Okay, um, ARPA funds update.
So back during COVID times, we had, but one good thing that kind of came out of that was there was ARPA funds that was provided to, I think, every town, county in the state. Um, and out of those funds, the town received seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. In which when we received that, we earmarked a majority of that to repair or replace well one. We also earmarked, and spent already, eighty-one thousand for body cameras for the police department. So we have roughly about six hundred and sixty thousand left of the ARPA funds that are still designated earmarked right now for the well one, well one repair or replacement. I think it's actually a replacement now at this point, right? Uh, I did provide you the bid.
The state, the state wouldn't allow us to repair.
So Underwood is sending out the bid package. They provided a list of contractors that do this kind of a project, so those are the, the list that I gave you. Every year we have to do recording on our ARPA funds. And as of right now, we are, um, we are obligate, we have to obligate the funds by twelve thirty-one, twenty-four. So that means we have to sign contracts, get in, basically make good and make promises of where we're gonna spend those funds by the end of this year. And then we have to expend those funds by the end of twenty-six. So this project, if it's going to go forward, needs to happen soon so that we can obligate those funds. We will also, once these bids come back, have a better idea if the six sixty is gonna cover this or if it's not gonna cover this. And if it doesn't cover it and if we don't have the other funds, you guys will have to make the decision to. and if it doesn't cover it, and if we don't have the other funds, you guys will have to make the decision, do we even keep the board with the project, or if we do, how much extra will we need to cover it? So I imagine there'll still be further discussion as far as the cost of this project.
This bid package, does this include, um, the well, everything to hook it up, and the testing that it's, that it's involved? Because I know the testing is very expensive.
Yeah, we're going to decommission well one, we're going to decide we're going to use that as a monitoring well, so we don't have to spend the cost of the well to monitor, so.
Okay.
Um, we're going to do a, yeah, sub-servive pump, so everything, everything's pretty much included, so.
Okay, and what do we have in?
Anything that I could think of.
Yeah, in the water, um, do we have, uh, capital monies set aside for improvements?
We do, we do have a capital reserve for the water system.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm only guessing that what we.
I just think we wait until we get the bids.
Yeah, yeah.
We see what the cost is, and then we go from there.
Okay, alright. Alright, awesome, okay, um, parking rec.
Basically, that's going to help our supply.
Oh, of course it is.
Be good.
Yeah, good.
And I'm hoping it might help a lot.
Sure, alright, parking rec update, Danielle.
So, and we'll have it for you, and busy, I'm trying to get things set up for this. We are kind of trying to recreate the whole program from the beginning, from one of the first things is really just designating rooms and program names. So the front page is just different ideas for the programs and room names. I wanted your kind of ideas on the one. So we do a program name and then an actual, like, room name instead of calling it the second floor of the mill. We could have, the pump stop room is up here, and that's stuff like that, so we can, like, locate it for people, and it can be a common name. And then the top list is just the different programs we could do for the names for the seniors. So far, the best one that everybody likes is the senior connections. And we tried between Alicia and I, and tried to go through as much history as we could to try to figure out what needs would be good for things inside this building.
How'd you find out the bathroom?
Um, digging on that.
How'd you learn?
The bathroom, and I had to figure it out. Yeah, that was enough, heard it's playing somewhere.
Actually, I think it was a whole new group, I don't know.
I personally like the Belmont Center, only because that covers anything and everything.
Well, what's it, so is this just a name of the, what's this a name?
So the top part is to be the name of the senior group, so right now, it's a group that's in there, is named Friends of Belmont Seniors. So we're trying to separate it so it's not everybody thinking they're joining that group and it's starting a new recreation of a whole new group. So that's the first part of it. The second part of it is a name for the actual group, so it's a location in the building. So when I put on ads, I can say, man, the heritage room or any of this, instead of just saying the second floor of the mill.
Just like we've named, so Tioga Room, that one, so Penn Stock Room.
Well, that's kind of why when I, when I saw the Tioga Club, you know, we've already got the Tioga Room, so to speak.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Um, and I guess the question is, is that when you say senior, what is senior? Alright, is, you know, I mean, if somebody comes and wants to join this group and they're, I don't know, forty-five years old, I don't consider them senior, alright, and why?
That will have to be decided, the random rules on the next page, we put guidelines, and those are things that we want to include in the guidelines of how, what names we want to do, and I can add.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, this could just be the name of their actual program, so kind of like, like, Parson X number program, easy identified as that.
Mm. Yeah. Yeah. Well, I like the Belmont Center, personally, but that's just me.
And then the second page, I had gone through a couple of different community centers and senior groups and to try to general.
Find out.
Set of, set of guidelines and stuff, we'll obviously have a bigger path of guidelines, so there's just something, what we want to see. And then, the third page is a calendar, it has a bunch of different things on the calendar. And on the left side of that second page is just a description of everything, so it kind of gives them an idea of what's great and what might cost a little bit of money, or what supplies they would need to bring, or what, what do we have supplies for them to bring? So that we can try to get a mix of the low-cost and the high-cost and could possibly cost at the front.
And then we came up with the idea that after your first meeting, because her, um, the senior program and any other programs she's going to have is not going to be able to start in swimming first. So we figured we could have an open house on that floor, as it would be, um, kind of reorganized and re-renovated, not renovated, but reorganized for what was to her, her and her activities that she's going to have, not only for the senior group, but for the community as a whole. So we thought of having an open house after, so that can be after, um, where people could meet Danielle, they could check out the space. Um, we'll get their input on what future activities they would like to do, um, kind of unveil the new space and the new activities that we're bringing to Belmont. What are your thoughts?
Um, and then after, so we have, it's probably going to take about two or three months to get everybody to talk to wheels, wheels on wheels. And they said, once we have a consistent group of fifteen people, they will start being able to come back in and provide meals, they just need to make sure that there's a, for once a month, it will only do some of things, but they will make it so that they can come in, but they require fifteen people to make it kind of work coming from up for them, so.
Yeah, but still.
That's hopefully in the works, and we've reached out.
That would be awesome, wouldn't it?
We have to see what else we can add in for those three senior programs to have people come here and get speed or do anything like that.
Nice, awesome, good. So what do you need from us? Just that lesson?
Not much, just the.
Are we going to do like the names at the open house, or are you looking for kind of a consensus on them now?
We can do it that way, this, yeah, if anybody, well, give me an idea of what means they'd like, or we can open it up at that open house and open it to the community, and ask them what kind of names that they like. Um, it's more really, I mean, the group itself is a pretty easy name, and we can figure that out with the actual group, because I know that everything, and Belmont has its history and stuff, and where it's probably going to have a little plaque on the outside of the door, that's kind of something to make sure that you guys all have the right.
Room.
A good idea as far as the room, so.
Mm-hmm.
Any of those that have spoken to you or jumped out of a shoe? I mean, that you're no on.
What? Come on.
I forgot you called my person. So, do you want me to make, put, say them out loud, or anyone who was?
Yeah.
So something that Danielle and I had come up with, and I think other people have voiced their opinion too, was we came up with the Duffy Room, the Heritage Room, the Village Rec Room, the Badger Room, which she says is the original name of the mill, Benwick Hosiery Mill Room, it's a little too long, I think.
That is, we really want.
Um, the Wallace Rhodes Room, or the Linda, or the Froly Room from Linda Froly. I like the Duffy Room or the Heritage Room. And then we kind of thought, if, if in the future, when we do move to Town Hall, that it would be called, like, the Belmont Village Community Center would be a good name for that, in the future.
I'm not opposed to any of them.
Ideas? I'm not opposed to any of them, you want me to take off the list? You want to start there? Okay. Is that the one that's a really long name?
It's a little rough. I'm not opposed, it's a little rough to say.
Alright, so I will get some other opinions about those, and we will name a room.
I said I'll get back to you and then I'll think about it.
Okay. Can we get back to you?
You want to add one?
Your opinion, my opinion.
Oh, it's cute. Doggy.
No, I'm trying to keep it a mile more. How's this disposal?
I, I have some, I do have some good news, if we're still on old business. Can I wait?
On my list.
Oh, please, I didn't get an updated list, I have the old list.
Okay, this is, but yours is going to go on, what do we have for other new business? We're going to, yours is going to be under new business.
Oh, sorry, it's other old.
It should be other old, I know, it's whole business.
Other old, so other old business, we do have a update on our grant that D P W applied for, so now Craig can come and up to you.
So last, last week, we got, um, we got unanimous approval from the Governor's Council, um, for the grant we applied for, the new truck between evil grant. So, um, we ordered the truck, we ordered the body, and we're on our way to getting it before, hopefully, before the end of this summer, so. Yeah, it's, that, that's the tough part, trying to, trying to, uh.
Get the delivery.
You know, yeah, trying to get stuff, so, um, yeah, so I mean, I think the funding goes up to two hundred, it's been two hundred and seven thousand dollars, and then whatever above beyond the response will build it, it's a really good name, so.
And are you going to decommission one of the?
Yeah.
You, you, oh, that's right, we have to take it apart, that's right, that's right, we got to torch it, yeah, that's right, remember that, okay.
You got to put a hole in the wall.
And then we can scrap it.
Well, we can save, yeah, we can scrap and we can save.
And we can use whatever funds we get from scrappage, I don't know how much that would be towards all setting the costs.
What, upfitting, sure, good, alright, awesome, good, John, good, that was a,
So it's really.
A good grant to get.
Well, work, you think.
I know, I know. Worth it in the long run.
Yeah.
Um, I think maybe a few months ago, we had a water leak in the lower level of the mill, over by the General Assistance Building.
Yep.
I had brought up that, that does need to be addressed, um, we do have funds in the municipal facilities, capital reserve fund to address those. It is something that obviously needs our attention to, to get someone in to see if it's drainage or what that issue is, so it doesn't occur again, because it did cause some damage, mold issues, um, building and grounds was great at remedying it, and they're in there drying it. But it is not something that we just want to, to risk another flood again, so I don't know if you guys want to put, Patrick, on looking into what a remedy would be?
Is it caused because the outside has been graded higher than the whatever, that, that door?
For the wall break, and what they've done is they filled, it's a very porous rock foundation, uh, they poured stone in there.
Yeah.
Obviously, the water has found ways to come in, we need to be able to come in with an excavator or a backhoe and dig around there, put a new fill in, and, uh, get the experts in to get that water so it goes away from the building. Right now, it drains right towards one or dog, so we get heavy rain, we were very fortunate, last week, when we got all the rain, uh, the water flowed. Sometimes it doesn't, it wants to come back in, so, uh, there is drainage problem.
Probably when that happened, it could have been, there was just enough frost in the ground too, that it wouldn't drain, mm, yeah.
So there is, you know, over, over time, uh, from what I understand, being long before my time when the child care was there, they used to have this problem very, it was a common problem, uh, we've been very fortunate, uh, but we do need to get someone in, with the experience in there to, uh, give us their ideas and give us their quotes and, uh, see what we can do. The major concern I have is that the main power line, underground power line, well, this mill runs on that side of the building, so we've got to be very cautious.
Nothing's ever easy, is it?
Yeah.
So you're going to reach out to some contractors?
I'll have to reach out.
And I have one final, um, I, now that we have moved forward with a reduced operating budget to meet the, the needs of the town, I plugged in all those numbers, gave all the department heads new budget worksheets. Um, in with that, I created a formula that basically says each month, you know, we, this should, this shows a percentage of where we are to keep on track of the budget.
Yeah.
Um, so right now, it's basically eight point three three percent each month, right now, we should be at twenty-five percent spent of our budget, we're at twenty-three. So right now, we're trending good, we're not over budget as prediction, um, and I gave all the department heads with their new budget sheets, there's a formula that says if this cell equals more than the target, it turns their box red. So some of them do have red boxes, that just means that they're trending a little bit over budget right now. And then there'll be some months where they have less spending, where they may get back under trend.
So it kind of keeps them, right, keeps the department heads kind of with, so they know.
Have an idea of, ooh, I'm, you know, I should be at twenty-five, now I'm at twenty-six, or thirty, or forty, or whatever they are right now.
Yeah. Okay, alright.
But good news, we're not, we're trending good where we want to right now.
Alright.
So I think on, on a monthly basis, that your first, your first meeting, I'll give you the update that you guys want.
Update. No other old business?
The Harrod's?
Okay, um, any public?
Uh, I'd just like to make the board aware and call in aware that over the beach, the person that's doing the construction up off the wild trail is continuing to do that, there are ten-wheelers, uh, with imperial going up and down, tractor trailer cars loaded with, uh, chippers and everything else, uh, that whole area of the lawnsmen destroyed, uh, and the path itself is taken to be, we observe them every day, and when we go over to, uh, uh, Chuck on the beach, uh, and they don't care, they just go right out. So you drive in, it looks, it looks a mess.
So Karen and I had a meeting with the property owner and his lawyer and our lawyer, and there was a new agreement that was filed very late that we had never seen before. Once we got the copy of the agreement, basically, the new agreement leaves the old agreement in place for a temporary period of time until he has constructed his completely new entrance to his property, which will avoid the trail completely. But his prior agreement states that the property owner is responsible to repair any damage that is done to the trail. So we did not do anything with a bond or anything for the trail itself, because the document that's on file at the registry for his agreement with the state says he has to fix the trail. So right now, he can only use the trail for access there, we're supposed to have put out some signage to warn people that there's traffic across the trail, but at this point, we don't feel that there's anything more that we can do for right now.
Yeah.
We'll just keep track of it.
Yeah, oh, definitely, yeah, because the problem is, is that when he packs up and leaves and doesn't do his part, um, then it'll be in the lawyer's hands.
Yeah, the chase is up.
And then the chase is on.
Well, I believe it's the state, because his agreement is with the state, I believe it will be.
Then there'll be a bigger chase.
It will be responsible.
Sure, but we're still going to be, we're still in the middle, because we've got to have access to our beach, come good weather. Do we have any idea how long he's going to be there? I just got.
And is he going to be able to, like, repair things, I say, okay, like, there's somebody aggressive.
When we spoke.
The roads are going to be fine, I mean, other than we've got this spring softness, and he's created,
Sure, alright.
And other than clearing the path for his new, proposed new driveway, and having the steel girders and the planks and everything there, he has not done any work down on the bottom of the beach road at all, all the work is being done up above.
It's probably too wet.
But he plans to construct his new entrance as soon as possible, because he doesn't want to keep using the trail.
Sure.
He wants to use his new access, so, you know, he, it shouldn't be too long, but.
It's probably too wet, is it wet where he's, you know?
Very uneven too, where he's cutting through, all just.
He's waiting for, he's waiting for D E S permissions for a crossing that needs to be made for wetlands.
Oh, to do it. That could be scary.
You're going to put a side, because you're going to be required to put a sidewalk there, because you've got people parking in the parking lots, using that wild trail that's full all the time, they've got to come up the road now, going past his driveway to get to the wild trail. I mean, is that something that's going to be required by the town? You don't have any subdivision regulations as far as sidewalks, so, I mean, if it's a country road, it's a last five country road, it's.
Yeah, you're right, you're still dealing with the.
And I understand the concern, but I don't see how you can do that.
Well, the trail won't be his access anymore.
No.
No, he means coming from the parking lot near the beach up to the trail. No, he means coming from the parking lot near the beach up to the trail.
Yeah, yeah.
Right beyond the railroad tracks.
Now, you've got residential traffic coming into that public way, where before it was just the beach traffic. I mean, it's just gonna be one house, though. I mean, it's, I mean, I think, I think somehow we, we have to put a positive spin on this, because what he's doing in essence is, is he took away the big development he was gonna put in there, but he's still arguing, clearing it, he's gonna make a big house out there.
So, I mean, it's gonna, it's not even helping the homeless at all, if someone's living out there, and they've cut, and they've cut, you know, cut most of the trees. I mean, I think they're gonna find, you know, people that will live in there and have to find someplace, someplace else to go.
They'll go across the street.
They will, but they won't be on Belmont, man. I, I, I mean, I, I guess, I guess my feeling is that if it was going to be used for this property, it's, this is, this is probably the best use.
Better it's one than, than a whole?
Better it's one than, than, you know, I, cause that would just been a mess as far as logistics with the trail and with the people, and then, then you would, then you would be into having some type of sidewalk and something like that.
I just worry about kids, cause they all know how kids are when you go to the beach. You open the car door and they go. I know these days.
Yeah, I mean, the beaches.
The beach, yeah, the beach won't get most of the traffic for the actual beach unless it's, they are not from town, cause if they're from town, they can try to park up there and walk to it. Most of the people from town are down at the beach, it's more of a little chair walk.
Yeah, yeah, alright, alright.
It's really kind of out of our hands, and it's just.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, um, no other, um, old business? No other public comment? Okay. Our next meeting is scheduled for April seventeenth. They have the text, April seventeenth, right here.
It's gonna be a text, don't lie to me.
Oh, fifteenth, and do we have a non-public?
Yes, C.
Alright.
I'm here.
Um, ninety-one, we are going into non-public, ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, letter C. Uh, roll call, Travis?
I wanna.
Don't.
Tony, Pat.
Sharon.
Yes. Here.
Have you made some motion?
Were you there yesterday? Did you make it in?
Can I, can I just have a, um, can you just, are, you're going into non-public?
Yeah.
Are you coming out of non-public into public after that? Well, because, because that's.
This non-public ain't gonna be very long.
This non-public's not gonna be long, he says, so.
It doesn't make any difference, I wanna know if you're coming back into public session after. Last week, that happened.
Yes, I do.
And there would probably have been some other.